Which is also an executive session.
I move to approve all three dates of minutes. Second?
Motion, second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Approval of warrants. I'll obtain a motion to approve school warrant number one oh six eight for seventy-nine thousand nine hundred and forty dollars and sixty-six cents. General warrant number one zero six nine for a hundred and thirty-two thousand two hundred and three dollars and ninety-five cents. Payroll warrant number twenty-six for five hundred and thirty-seven thousand six hundred and sixty-one dollars and eighty cents.
So moved. Second?
Motion, second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Financial items. We have a number of transfer requests. Request number one is to transfer two thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars and sixteen cents from the highway street painting expense account to the highway vehicle supplies account. It's for vehicle repair supply expenditures. To obtain a motion to approve that.
So moved. Second?
Motion, second, and all in favor?
Aye.
The next one is also highway. He's looking to transfer eleven thousand four hundred and twenty-three dollars and fifty cents, of which five thousand five hundred and fifty-three oh nine is coming from... Well, that doesn't add up, right?
No.
He has it broken down from snow and ice salt account, five thousand five fifty-three oh nine, and five thousand from snow, ice, and sand.
There's eight seventy-four-three down. A little lower.
Is that... Oh, all right. Okay, so that... Then that does equal up, right? So, eight hundred and seventy-four-three from snow, ice, diesel, gas expense accounts, and it's going to snow and ice salary account. So it's all staying within snow and ice. Year-end closeout, he's just moving money to make payments, so I'll obtain a motion to approve that.
So moved. Second?
Motion, second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Next one's something from the water department. They want to move a thousand dollars from the training salary to the other salary. Reason is the budget depleted due to the service. Water main breaks requiring a large amounts of detailed coverage. This one's already been approved by finance, so it's coming to us after they've already approved, so obtain a motion.
So moved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Next is from the board of health. They're looking to transfer five thousand six hundred and eighty-one dollars and thirty-eight cents from the board of health recycling monitor salaries line item to the recycling contracts line item. And that's to cover the cost of Casella invoices. And they know that there may to be another transfer to cover June as well. And that... That, I think, is because we just signed a new contract with Casella. Prices went up a little bit, so... Five thousand six eighty-one thirty-eight. Intend a motion?
So moved. Second?
All in favor of that?
Aye.
Next one is transfer of three fifty-one fifty from the veterans services other expenses to the veterans services agent salary. This is a shortfall in the salary line item for 2021. Did they not calculate? Shouldn't be...
No, she had the... Whatever it is. They changed the software to input all the information and make claims and all that stuff, so she had to go through multiple...
Oh, training events or some... Okay. I'll obtain a motion on that one.
So moved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
And then, I think this is the last one. Fire salary. This is a request from the reserve account. Finance committee's reserve account. The fire department's looking for four thousand two hundred and sixty-one dollars ninety-three cents to cover fire salaries for the last month of the year. This one's already been approved by the finance committee, so it's just looking for our final approval of something they've already done. So I'll obtain a motion on that.
Move to approve it. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Good thing we have the reserve fund.
Yeah, well, that's the one thing with fire and police, you just can't tell what kind of emergencies are gonna transpire throughout the year. All right, so who does that?
The snow and ice transfers? Are we sure the number is right? I think we're off by like a dollar.
Are we?
Yeah. Dollar change.
Sheila will catch that.
All right.
Are we short a dollar or are we over a dollar? Because if the approval is short a dollar, that could be a problem.
Well, the amount requested is... Looks like it's a dollar something short of what they're moving over. So it shouldn't be, it won't be off.
Okay. I see we have no old business. New business?
I just did math. That's right.
Okay. So NB Helps request for resources, Christmas in July fundraiser. That's one of those tracking sheets for an event they have coming up. They're requesting approval to hold their annual Christmas in July fundraiser. It'll be a toll booth style fundraiser where volunteers will stand at designated place along Main Street and have enough volunteers at the transfer station to collect donations. So they're looking to get the initial approval so they can send it to the police chief. So I'll obtain a motion to...
They need us first? I thought they had to get the other stuff first?
No, they put it on our radar first so that we can track it. So we do like an initial, we just initial the first one, so they...
I move to approve that. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, I think the purpose of coming to us is so that we can direct them as to what approvals they'll need. Because they don't need... They'll need the police department approvals. Don't really think they'll need fire department approvals. Who else is on there?
EMS.
EMS, no. Board of Health, no. No. Yeah, so they just need the chief. So you could just tell them that.
Or the recycle center too, they're gonna need.
Oh, yeah, they're gonna put somebody at their recycle center. They should get the board of health on there. All right, next is resignation from the beach committee. Brian Hayes submitted a resignation from the beach committee. Intend a motion to accept that.
So moved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
The other thing we have to talk about too is Danny Roman hasn't done anything with the playground committee in a while. They don't know that he's in town.
Unresponsive to.
Yeah, so probably be a good... Yeah, and he's not responding to any email inquiries or stuff like that, so might be a good time to visit the idea of a parks and recreation committee to encompass all the stuff. The rail trail, the playground, the disc golf park, the beach. Just make it one big committee that oversees everything, streamline it a little bit. And then we won't need so many volunteers. You get four or five people on one.
Right.
I think that's a discussion for another day. Okay. Next on the agenda is Bruce Arnold. Although I'm not sure why. I thought my letter was pretty self-explanatory, so I don't know.
That's what I'm here to talk about, but in the interest of the young people over here, I'll defer my position to their position because I don't want to keep them up tonight.
I don't know. What are they here for? I got nothing on my agenda.
We actually have a public commentary after. We're just having an issue on Walker Road with speeders.
Okay.
We're looking to have it made to a dead end. We have escalating issues happening there.
Okay.
So we want to get on to the agenda.
Oh, okay. Okay. We can do that. Want to take that up now? I guess we can take that up now. That's fine.
Would you like me to explain everything?
Well, we did get a letter, so...
Well, the most recent thing that we've had happen was this past Saturday. We've had an issue with one of the continuous speeders who doesn't want to stop. Actually ran my husband's foot over and dragged him down our street, causing road rash all over his back too. We had the police there for that. And they're just... They're continuing to do it. There's no stopping them. They do it on a daily basis even since Saturday. And our kids, all they want to do is ride their bikes and drop me down the street and their scooters. And what these people have told us was your kids shouldn't be in the road. They're being kids. All we want is for them to be able to play outside. It's summertime. We don't want people flying down the road. We're trying to protect them.
Yeah, well, did you talk to the chief? Who'd you talk to?
We talked to Sergeant Dona. Sergeant Dona was actually totally on board. He thought making it a dead end was smart. And then I don't remember who I talked to yesterday, but he actually... It was another police officer who also drove down the road, and he said there's absolutely no reason that shouldn't be made a dead end. There's no reason for anybody to really not just go around. It's really just a cut off. There's only three houses on it, and we're actually all here, the three houses that live on it. And I have actually have signatures from even the people that have but our road, who are also on board. And actually, Mike is one of them. Mike's also here. Exactly. But...
There's really no sign. She feels that she has the right, she's twenty-three, that she has the right to go thirty miles on the road. If you've ever gone on the road, and you guys should, it's... But usually they're not. And there's no need, there's... It's horrible.
You have to pull over and let somebody come by, and so if somebody's coming down and doing that kind of speed, you can't get over. It's an action that's been waiting to happen.
Let's all take a ride down there one of these days this week.
I was down there this weekend, and I could just barely get by because there was a particle, nothing... There was cars on both sides of the road.
Oh, that was...
Those are my house.
We had an incident that night too with her.
I couldn't do five miles an hour.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you.
So you know, I travel all the roads in town. I look for double holes and potholes all the time.
Just to point out that day. So that day that you drove down, this specific speeder that we're having an issue with, went thirty miles an hour down the road.
Between the cars?
Between the cars.
Good for her, because I...
Got out of her car when I yelled at her to stop and wanted to fight me.
Yeah.
So this is an escalating issue that's causing harm to my family.
And she lives not that far from my house, so it's like...
She lives less than a mile from me.
She lives less than a mile.
So you did file a police report?
I filed a police report, yep. And I've spoken to three different police officers, and I'm keeping in contact with all of them. They're keeping in contact with me.
Which end would you make dead?
Where, yes, where one forty-eight meets Walker.
Okay, so you come off... You come off Donovan then?
Nope. We're talking where you would come off one forty-eight onto Walker.
Going down Walker.
So your only entrance would be from Donovan?
That's my man.
Yeah.
Off the guy's out there.
Dead end, the...
Yep.
Right, so they're hitting it off of sixty-seven going.
Oh, and they're just...
Yes.
The problem is, especially with that light being out, because the town turns the light out that's right in front of my house. I put reflectors up because there's a culvert there, and you'd have to see people come down, flying down one forty-eight and come down Walker. I mean, wow, that's been a real bad accident.
Or how they haven't popped all the tires in their cars. When we have the clogs, I mean, it's so bad.
Popped my tire one fifteen on my road.
And our kids are...
I didn't know that was a road. I was sort of...
Once they realize that something's a road, they're gonna say, all right, well, I'm gonna use it.
Yeah, we're gonna use it, and it doesn't seem...
So let's... Let's take a ride down there, and then in two weeks we'll have... Maybe the chief come in and Jason, and we'll talk about what to do about it, as far as whether or not to block it off or...
Why don't we refer it out at the safety committee?
Yep.
Since the chiefs and...
Yes.
Yeah, because the only thing we need to get feedback from is the fire chief, because they're gonna have to...
Right. Especially doing it on this end where they'd be coming down.
Would they even come down that way, or would they just go straight down? Not one forty-eight, go down straight down.
Well, that's up to them.
And then come up Donovan.
Yep, that's what we...
That's what I figured they'd do.
Well, we just... We'll send it over to them so that we have their... They'll start looking at it. We'll take a ride, and then we'll have a plan for our next meeting.
Also, we had purchased speed limit signs before we realized that we were not allowed to put them up without getting fined, so we were also hoping in the meantime that we might give you permission to put them up. The slow signs that we have up on the road are not doing anything.
Well, who told you you would get fined?
The police department.
Yeah. Someone told us that we would get fined.
Like official speed limit.
Yeah, you can't post a speed limit on the street.
That's littering. We could get you for three hundred bucks.
I think they kind of have that backwards, to be honest with you.
Okay, because we were...
They cannot find somebody for violating the sign because it's not approved, so they can't issue a ticket.
Okay, so I...
But the person that puts it up is subject to...
Okay, yeah, because I mean, that was... The person that we're having an issue with is the main reason is, well, there's no signs. So technically, I can go thirty. Well, we have a slow spot, slow children are playing, but we just got turn signal an hour. Slow children are playing signs, but we just got them in, and then we were afraid to put them up because we were like, oh, well. We don't want to get fined while we're trying to...
Yeah, the issue is they have to be the right sign approved by the mass DOT, you know, so they have to be a certain size and shape and say the right words. Yeah, so that's why...
Can we nail them to the tree for the meantime?
Yeah, I have a problem with that.
They probably didn't pay attention to doing it anyways.
I mean, I know.
But the subject is a term, you know?
The speed limit is on that road.
There's no sign. You don't have one.
You wouldn't want more twenty-five dollars.
There's no need to go any faster than ten, possibly fifteen. Exactly five. He's a five, but because she's twenty-three and she's getting fined. The law is, there's no sign, I can go please. Well, as soon as you hit... Yeah, and she is, but we're trying to ask her as adults, as parents. Hey, we're just... Gates are driving between all the houses. We all play together.
Because Jason's saying you can make it a private road if you guys want to take it over to the highway road.
I will take over as a private road.
But you have to maintain it.
Now, would that still... If it was considered private, you have no things on both ends, is that still accessible by anybody? It's changed a lot of things.
It depends on how private we make it. So if it's made a private road that just the people on the road maintain it, and you don't rely on the highway department to fix it or plow it, then it's a private road. Enforcing it might be difficult because you have to rely on it.
They already know. Because none of them know it's there. They're struggling to use it.
Now, here's a question.
If it's a private road, could they put speed bumps on it?
Well, that's what we had thought about.
Those ones are nasty if you hit them.
We'll have to look into the logistics, though. That's one of the things we'll look at so that we can tell you and advise you whether... But that may be true. We'll have to look at it.
How often does this person...
Every day.
Oh, well, the last time... No, it's... She went by three times in one day just to be there.
Just to do it.
Just to do it, and that's when we have the problem, because we're like, all right, now this is just becoming your...
I mean, she's not the only speeder. She's just causing the most issues at this moment. Because most of the time when we yell for people to slow down, they will usually slow down. And most of the time when they see the kids, they will slow down, most of the time, not everybody.
But now she's just doing it on purpose, and it's like, to prove what? You're twenty-three. If you hit my kid, what are you proving?
Is that really a time saver?
No, it's really not.
You save fifteen seconds. I've done it. I've literally done it.
You can just go and go down Donovan, and you get to the same place.
Yeah, because after I received the complaint, I went on the municipal map room that we have in town, and I kind of looked at it from an aerial perspective.
That's the trouble with GPS. GPS probably redirects people down there.
All right, so that's what we'll do. We'll look into the different... The possibilities we could do. We'll figure it out, and we'll make sure that we'll be back in two weeks.
Perfect.
Appreciate it, yeah, really.
All right, thanks for coming in.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Appreciate the time.
Sorry. We carry out all the babies. Good luck, guys.
Can we have babies in here more often?
So once again, I guess we're back to the Arnold thing, and again, I'll state it. I wrote a letter for the town's position, so I don't understand. I think it's unequivocal, so I don't understand the...
Yeah, well, that was a real Norman Blackwell scene, by the way.
Yeah, it was great. So anyway, I don't understand the letter, but what I want to know is who voted to send this letter? How was that decided?
That was decided before you did your petition.
That's what I figured.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I figured. So anyway, we went through due process, you advised, three of you. We agreed on those ground rules. I did it. You didn't support it. I get nothing but pushback the whole way. All right, so anyway, in your letter, I have several things that I want to do, but my desire really is to appeal this letter, appeal the decision that you made.
Did you get a copy of the town council's opinion?
Yeah, I did. And in fact, that's part of my...
So there you go.
...presentation tonight.
It's... Town council has said, "Public money cannot be used for private gain." We've said from the beginning that this is private game. Public funds aren't to be used. We went through town council. He advises the same thing. The letter's unequivocal. It benefits only you. That's it. Public funds can't be used, so...
That's not correct.
That is absolutely wrong.
That is absolutely wrong.
So here's your option for an appeal. Superior Court, Massachusetts. That is your option.
You know what? If it's got to go that way, and you want it to cost the town that kind of money, I'll make it happen. I can do it.
Do it, because you will lose, and I am absolutely...
Here's what I want to do tonight, though. I want to take every little part of this letter that you wrote and correct the statements that were made.
Do you want to hear this?
We don't need to.
Do you need to hear this?
I don't need to hear it. We've gone over this.
Right. Matter's closed. We don't want to hear it.
Okay, so...
The matter's closed. We don't want to hear it. You're not recognized. You're out of order. You can either stop talking and leave the meeting now, or you'll be removed by the police department.
KP Law. Okay, in his statement, he says he does not know enough about the issue.
Well, he doesn't know enough about the issue, but we do. It's our decision. We've made the decision. So you can remove yourself from the meeting because we're not taking this up anymore. You have your option. It's an appeal to the Superior Court. Anything else? Public comment period? Anybody?
Yeah. There's been a lot of issues with the signs popping around town.
Yep.
Also, like on town property and stuff. I sent Ashley, it was just yesterday, probably didn't have time to do anything with it, but I...
I did put copies in your folder.
Put a suggestion for a bylaw.
Yeah, because I... So I did see a lot of the banter on the face...
Face thing.
Face thing?
Yeah, you're doing the face thing.
Yeah, so... The First Amendment restricts the government's ability to restrict speech, right? So town property, as long as it's been a public, traditional public forum, the town can only regulate speech that is in a content-neutral way, which means you either restrict all speech or no speech. And we can put restrictions, time, placement, or restrictions. So the only way we can regulate it is through a bylaw.
Right.
So...
That's my suggestion.
Yeah, so this is your suggestion for the bylaw?
Yeah, I mean, that's, you know, of course, I'm sure it'd have to be tweaked and, you know, get some other opinions. But, you know, it was kind of a...
Yeah.
Like, I mean, it's starting to get to be the war of the signs. One sign goes up, one sign goes down, another sign goes up. They're starting to kind of really polluting the landscape, and, you know, I mean, also issues with like cutting the grass and things like that, too.
Well, it appears to me, I don't think anybody had anything to say about that first sign that went up about the June fourth meeting and stacked the meeting to, you know, get the school a ton of money. That sign, nobody said boo. None of them were stolen, vandalized, removed, nothing. Just seems to be in one direction, so... But, your point's taken. I mean... Maybe the vandalizing is only coming from one side of the political ideology, but... But they do pollute the land. I agree with that.
I think it has to be clear, too, from the board of selectmen's position that while people have always placed signs of a political nature on town property, it's not a political statement by the board of selectmen, one way or the other, regarding any signs that go on public property.
Yeah, and there's also an issue with three people picking up their signs. I mean, I actually have been thinking kind of about this a while, because even way back, remember when Spencer Furniture went out of business? They have signs up, and they were there forever. They never picked them up, you know? It turns into litter, and, you know, I'm...
Should we handle all five hundred yards?
You know, as anybody knows me, I'm the coach of litter, you know?
Yeah. There are sign... There are, there are signage bylaws out there in other towns that we could probably look at, and, um, for instance, you could, towns can restrict political signs in people's yards by time placement. You could say that you can only have a political sign in your yard for thirty days prior to an election.
Well, I'm not really concerned at all about private property, I'm just more concerned about, you know.
But if it's an aesthetics thing, it should be universally.
Well, yeah, I mean, yeah, I don't, yeah, I'm not trying to push the limits here, I, you know, it's my suggestion that, you know.
I think the point is too, is a lot of these signs aren't getting picked up when everything's over, like even after our town elections, they were signed still out down at the senior center for a long time.
Yeah, that's.
You know what I mean, I just think that.
And all those signs that were up before are gone today.
You know, one of my, one of my suggestions.
I haven't been out today, you saw them.
They're all gone now because of the poop that went on, the face thing there.
You know, what my suggestion is putting a time limit.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean.
Because like those buttons.
No, I think it's kind of necessary, you know.
They look disintegrated, excuse me?
Suggestions.
One other thing on that note is it's illegal to take someone else's sign.
Yeah, I know.
Because it's personal property, and I had a sign stolen off of, I didn't put any of my signs up on, when I was running for selectmen, on any town property, they were all on people that I know, and I asked them first, wanted them to ask me to put them on their properties, and I did, and the first day I put one on someone's property, it was gone the next day.
Yeah.
And then Dale mentioned it, because I talked to the chief of police, and that's theft.
Yeah.
I didn't push it because I didn't see who did it, but.
It was during an election period, it'll be considered tampering with an election also.
Correct, but, so, I mean. Right away, that was the first sign, it lasted a day, and it's gone, I bought twenty signs, I have nineteen left. Took them down right after the election.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll have to have a, um, we'll develop this, and we should be able to do it, I think it showed out, because we want to do a bylaw, um, for the beach. Try to give that, I mean.
Well, like I said, just look it over, you know, have other suggestions, you know, I just thought it was kind of the time to approach this subject.
And see what, you know, the book there still, if they have anything.
Yeah, I know there's a few towns that do have some pretty good, um, signage, I don't know that they're close by here, but they're out there, so.
Is it going to include yard sale signs on telephone poles, because that's private property also? You know, where do you start?
Well, I'm just.
Yard sales.
Yeah, well, the, the.
I'm just, I'm just, my focus is on town property, if you want to add something or expand it, that's up to you, but right now, I'm just focusing strictly on town property, you know, you know, the triangle down there by the town forest park and the little park in town area, I mean, it's, it's all looks so nice until you start having a half a dozen signs popping up and falling down and trying to cut the, around the grass around it and stuff, you know.
We'll see what's up, and we can adapt to, yeah.
The recall signs that were stolen, the ones that were stolen, there's one or two that are still there, um, there's one at the common. I'm going to be going down there, when I do the little town park, I'm going to whack, and I'll make sure that signage is all taken care of. My board of health signs, right at eight o'clock that night, I got all of them, I picked them all up, and I will take care of any ones that I put out. I put them at the, and I've been doing, this will be the third set of signs I've put out, across from Dollar General, over on Bell Street, and down at the town forest, and those ones there are just the ones that I thought about when I, of course, I put one on the little park, and then I had to move it.
I mean, there's, there's plenty of private property in towns that express your opinions, you know, I mean, it's no shortage, and it's my focus.
Want to add history, Bob? I'm sorry, but traditional public forums, this, this country was formed by people talking and.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm saying.
Public forum on the, out in the town square and on the commons and.
Well, that's what I'm saying, there's plenty of private property along roads and stuff where people can express their opinions and ideas and without having to put it on town property and, you know.
Fine line, you're walking, Mr. Avery.
Basically censorship.
Yeah, gotta be careful.
I say, hey, if we can't have signs, nobody has them.
Well.
I, I agree that a bylaw should address it, but I.
I'm going to be very careful with this, I mean, there's, there's already bylaws for like business signage on your own property, like how big it can be and.
Yeah, I'm not concerned about.
No, I know, I'm just saying that.
Private property.
I understand, but I'm just saying, there's already.
Spencer has one.
Well, we, we do too, I know, because when I was getting in the, getting a permit for a pool years ago, um, there was a gentleman who wanted to put up a sign in his yard, you know, it may have been East Brookfield, because he's the building inspector for East Brookfield, too, but he could only put up a sign of a certain size and everything, and he was, the building inspector was very specific, he's like, it can't be over this big.
Sturbridge has one, you can only have exterior lighting on their signs, it has, you know, wood in and all that kind of stuff, so.
So maybe, maybe we could do something where if you're going to put them up, it's okay, but you gotta let us know you're doing it, or the police chief know, that way if you leave them there, you know, we can.
You know who to go for, yeah.
You know, and after the election, they need to go.
Yeah, they do.
You know, um, and maybe we could put something in there so you don't, like, like Tina said, somebody tried blocking one sign, so, but that makes it cluttered.
Yeah.
You know, maybe if you put them out, you just, you have the bylaw state, well, you can't block other signs, so you can't have like twelve of them right on top of each other.
Right, yeah, they have to give space to certain amount of power, type of thing, yeah.
We'll have to look into it, it's going to be touchy.
I would have no problem coming down, you know, like whoever I need to, I'm coming down, I want to put signs out and have a map, here, 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 and here.
I never put any of my.
With my name on it, I have no problem with the map.
Yeah, well, see what you can find for bylaws in other towns, and we'll.
Registration fee.
Put something together.
Yeah, registration fee, registration fee, I'd pay a registration fee to put my sign up.
Yeah, I'm sure.
I can't fit them all in my yard, I'm really, I'm wanting that alone.
Yeah, and we don't have to reinvent the wheel, because other towns have studied this issue and had incorporated that into bylaws, so.
There might already be, you know, cases where signs were, people were told they couldn't put signs up or something, get sued or.
And Brookfield gives way with his leader board up there on Lake Nine.
Yeah.
They just get out of lane four.
That's, that's on private property, right?
Yeah.
It's, uh, you know, more concerned with the aesthetics and the, and the impression that it gives on town property, you know.
Right, well, we can't limit free speech either, so we gotta be careful.
Isn't the town property allowed to all the citizenry?
I don't want to tell you, I don't want to tell you, Brandon.
That's why it has to be content neutral.
Yeah.
You can't pick one side over another side, if you're going to, if you're going to regulate it, regulates everybody equal.
Like what's down there right now, it's like, there's the one side and then the opposite, all these people on the opposite side put their sign, I understand, that's to bring up speed.
By the way, just so everybody knows, I believe it's a felony to steal public signs.
It is, because I asked Chief Smith that, when mine was.
Yes, is that only within so many days of an election, because once the election is over, is it still?
Fair game?
Although they spend a lot of money in, it was an office of.
OCPF.
Yeah.
Pays the finance.
Yeah, and they oversee that, so if you spend money on a sign.
Right.
They're stealing your sign that you're off money and that you have to account for.
So whoever stole all those signs recently, if, if you stole them all yourself, you can be treasured, I guess, for each one.
Yeah.
So, each one is a separate instance.
I, yeah, I was just going to say, I think to, to Brandon's point, um, when it's on the public property, if the sign just appears, like in the instance of the sign down here being blocked by another sign, there's an anonymity to whoever put that sign there, I mean, Tina has said she put the signs out, so she, she takes ownership of that sign, but with free reign to put signs on the public property, if you put it on your own house, I, I had one of the, you know, June fourth signs out, it's on my property, I'm taking ownership of that sign, anyone that drives by knows what I think about that. I think that's part of the whole public forum, you know, when, when the country was founded, people were out there and, and saying these things in a, in a public space, and taking ownership of their opinion, so I think that's where the precedent gets weird, because all of a sudden, anyone could put a sign up, block another sign, and things like that without, without signing off on it, you see a commercial on TV, they say, this commercial is brought to you by so and so, or this political statement is brought to you by this organization, so they're signing off on it, even though they're not presenting it themselves, they're, they're signing it, so I think that's what Brandon, Brandon's getting to.
And that could be, because even on like campaign signs for state offices, it says paid for by the committee to reelect or something like that, so. You know who is, um, who's putting that sign up, so there's a victim.
Yes.
You know, because even if, if you go to court on something, you have to have a victim, or somebody has to have standing in a civil suit, um, so if it's just anonymous, who has standing?
And even in a situation where there is, uh, 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 if there isn't a precedent where you can't put that sign out, someone could put a sign out that says literally anything, and whoever happens to drive by before that sign gets, you know, gets pulled down, is, is, uh, that's, that's one of the things where if they're not signing off and letting people know what they, that they put that sign out there, nobody knows where it came from, it could say anything in the city, get rid of bylaws, that's not a good idea, they're the biggest business in the town, so.
Well, that's the guy.
Custom words or anything either.
Right, right.
I mean, that's just common sense, but people do it all.
I mean, that's, that corner park there is small, what if we get twenty signs of all various, I mean, even somebody starts putting up advertisements for this and that and the other thing, and then all, the local side, you have twenty, thirty signs, I mean, that's, it's just, you know, that's kind of my point.
For literary reference, there's the, uh, the Dr. Seuss book with the bee watcher, and then there's the bee watcher watcher, and then the bee watcher watcher watcher, and then.
Never ends.
You have the sign, and you have the sign blocker, and then you have the sign that blocks that sign, and just.
We can't read Dr. Seuss anymore. I haven't seen.
No, that one wasn't canceled.
Oh, was it?
That's all right.
I'm going to get that one.
Alright, so we'll, we'll study that and, um, try to get a whole town meeting just on bylaw changes at some point.
And do you realize I just finished today the by, new bylaw book? I did, I just finished all the revisions, now you're telling me you're adding new bylaws.
There's some blank pages in there, I know there's.
No, we used all the blank pages, because I had to add to the, um, the pot plant.
Yeah, because we can put that under the general bylaws for the town, not under zoning, so, yeah.
Well, all their bylaws never got entered, they were on, they weren't in.
Is there a bylaw against pot plants?
Well, you know, it's funny, because like with the, the state building code.
No, the, the, they use out of the plant, oh, they had, they had like sixteen inches I had add.
People together developed the building code, you said you're done with the, the book?
Yeah.
So they finished the, the building code book, and they go, well, we need something to do, let's start another one.
Revisions, right?
Book of revisions.
I, I just finished it after like a month.
That's what they do.
Yeah.
It's crazy, yeah.
Because adding all the stuff too, because like every, little, different people made them.
And anything they add costs us money.
They use different fonts, so as I'm cutting and fixing everything, nothing's lining up, nothing's, oh, I could kill you.
But if we add these, we can add them to the general bylaws.
Because I know there's some stuff in there on signs, because I did, you know, I just came back to do everything.
Yeah, businesses can't, can't be over a sidewalk or it has to be a certain height or anything, stuff like that.
Yeah, no need on signs.
What would happen? What else we got?
Anything else? We don't have anything else, so it's public comment period, anybody got anything?
I want to ask you about that parks committee thing, how soon will, can you work on that? That sounds wonderful.
We'll probably talk about it in two weeks again.
Yeah, because, um, July first is all the appointments.
Because that just sounds so much, so much better than how it is now.
What do you mean appointments?
All the committees that we have, uh, are appointed, so if it's not an elected position, it's appointed.
Yeah.
And if it's an elected position that nobody ran for and nobody was elected for it, then we make an appointment for it.
Okay.
So, uh, some are revolving terms, like finance committee has a revolving term for it, so somebody's up for reappointment, somebody's not up for reappointment. So we go through and, uh, if you look in the town, um.
You know I'm going on.
The report.
Report, there's what, two, three pages of fence viewers, bell ringer, tower person, maybe.
What, fence viewers?
Yeah, fence viewers.
There is so many things there.
I gotta get the book.
Harbor master, do you know that? Because when all the ships pull in, we need somebody to oversee the.
Yeah, there's a harbor master.
Which, by the way, uh.
Lash lake.
Yeah, we're trying to get a boat for the harbor master, so that's Brian Daly, so.
And I did share it.
And I know what I did.
I know you did, thank you.
Yeah.
Somebody else better, because I'll be sitting in my harbor, you'll lose your house, I'll be.
Did they have, have they picked a boat out? They must have, that's the question, right, they have to pick one out, it's all set up and everything.
We've got a, Ryan, Lieutenant Daly, went through, because he's our harbor master, and he went and he, he specked out a particular boat that would be perfect for our needs. Retail's at sixty thousand dollars, um, we can get it for thirty-seven, okay, so that's awesome. So, we have a GoFundMe page on, well, I do, because you have to do it personally, so, there's a GoFundMe page on Facebook, on the face thing, as John would say.
Yeah.
That, if you're interested, you can go on and you can donate for this, so as soon as we get.
Boat is a part. And it's really easy, real quick and easy to do it.
So as soon as we get a certain amount of money, we can put a down payment on the boat, secure it, and it fits, I think it could fit like six people, so if there's an emergency and you need to send a diver out on the boat and, and rescue people and stuff, um, there's all kinds of neat little things there.
So, so on a later note, for people that don't go on the face thing, how can people donate otherwise? Can they send a check to the town of North Brookfield in care of, well, if it's taking care of the boat, or does it have to go through?
Well, well, in that case, you can, you can write a check to the town, put in the note that it's for the boat, and they would put it in a special account, right?
We'll make a gift account.
Yeah, gift account, so.
Just saying for the old people in town that don't.
Right, so.
Well, you could just go collect all the checks, John.
I would.
And then just bring them all at once.
Put a sign on the.
No, because a lot of people haven't even heard of, I didn't hear about that until just now, that it was on the, wherever it is, but I like to.
Because you're not on the face thing.
Well, and I just don't know.
Right, and we, we had a boat years ago, but the thing doesn't really, it holds water better than it floats on water.
Yeah.
And, and.
It won't hold the engine on the back, the train scenes run it out, so if you put a, a motor on it.
We, we desperately need to get a boat that'll go on, uh, the bigger ponds and lash away, most importantly, um, to help maintain order a little bit, and, um, it would be really cool to get the boat, but the town just doesn't have the money. And, East Brookfield, this is, so this is for North Brookfield, this is North Brookfield's boat, so East Brookfield would not be, um, pitching in if North Brookfield bought it anyway, because it would be our boat.
Yeah, we don't want them to have control over, we don't want to share.
Do we have to rescue their people, though? Probably.
Well, mutually aid.
There's a line, there's a line in the right, so we have to.
Is there a line in the pond?
No, there's, well, we do have mutual aid.
What's used now for, uh, emergency rescue on, and on lash away or any of these?
We have a hovercraft.
I think they need the hovercraft, that's, I think that's a lot slower than a boat would be, plus they got to.
It is, it is kind of unstable.
You have the trailer down, right? Yeah, and it's not as stable, and, um, I think we have a, a dock that's easy to get to that we, we'll be able to dock it at, so.
So the magic number is thirty-seven thousand, that boat, motor and trailer, all set to go?
So, we just need, I don't know a lot of trailer, but we'll see, but we, the, the big thing right now is getting a down payment so we can secure it. And then, um, we'll go, we'll go from there with payments or whatever, as the donations come in.
Alright.
But that's a huge discount for that boat, so. I want whoever got that discount to go with me whenever I buy a boat.
I was just thinking, I might buy a boat if you get them that good of a discount.
Yeah, we get.
Not repeating, not repeating the name.
All the boat discount, everybody gets a boat.
What if we all buy boats, will the town get one for free? You know, if three people buy boats at a huge discount, we'll give the town one.
They do know that we don't have the money to buy one, and that it's all going to be by donation, so that's probably part of why they gave us such a good deal, so.
Awesome, that's nice.
Would the board of selectmen be up for a fundraiser that would be fun?
He can do whatever he wants.
Free boat rides, we'll get it.
Well, we have to be involved.
Well, we can't, I have the thought ability.
Come on.
What's him?
I'm seeing pies in the face.
That's what I was. Yes.
That's what I'm thinking.
Of the audience?
No, they're going to hate you guys, when she was saying a fundraiser that would be fun, I would love to hate y'all with pie.
It's where.
We're open, we're open to suggestions.
Each name would be on a can, and people would just keep throwing change into it, at, at a certain point in time, we would weigh up the cans, and the ones with the most in the can, they'd get the pie and things, and it's a really good way, the old, old Sturbridge Academy got.
So.
Two thousand dollars from the kids, and a couple of teachers got pies in the face. and a couple of teachers got pies in the face.
Well, while we're talking about it, uh, it looks like John's got something real quick, but we're gonna be having, we're trying to put together a parade for July fifth, the Monday after the Fourth. And it'll start ten o'clock at the fire station, and, um, we're gonna have, so far, uh, we got a color guard from a local recruiting office, and they're actually gonna be contributing, they're gonna try to contribute a whole lot more stuff, uh, to the event. Um, so we're actually planning a bunch of things for, uh, Independence Day weekend.
All right.
So stay, stay tuned, and did we secure Friday night?
Friday night, the laser light show that we canceled last year will be Friday night. That's the only date he could give us, so he'll be in Friday night.
So what are they doing?
On the common?
On the common.
July second.
Oh, July second.
I think John is having a big cookout on Saturday, and then Monday we'll have the parade.
Yeah.
That was, that was a joke, anybody, that was a joke, so John's...
I get nominated for everything. The cookouts on the rail trail, so on the rail trail, we do it down there.
That, that one's not gonna fall, it's making a free camera.
I know, I gotta stay awake. John's got a show in Telphore.
Okay, just don't let it fall over.
Show in Telph for the rail trail. Uh, I had a little altercation with a couple of motorbikes, uh, last Saturday, after we were done installing, uh, some of these barriers down roadways. Officer Churchy took their names and their phone numbers, their addresses and everything. If they get caught on the trail again, they're gonna lose their bikes, uh, they'll, they'll be impounded. I let them go this time, because that's the kind of person I am. The next time, I'm not gonna be that guy. They're gonna be in trouble. Uh, one kid was pretty good, the other kid called me an awful name, not gonna say it here. But anyway, this is the new gates that we're gonna be getting, uh, installed. I've got, I'm about halfway down, uh, my rail trail crew, Brandon, uh, Kim and Tina's helped me out, uh, Ernie Grimes and Paul Highbraves, but the crew's been really great. What we do is we sink a sonnet tube in the ground, three or four feet down, filled with concrete. There's a metal base that goes down in there. It's, it's, this is the grade here, you're gonna see this box. These are about forty, fifty inches apart, so you can't get your four-wheeler, your snowmobile, hopefully not your motorcycle between them. There's a telephone pole on each side to keep vehicles out of there. It says right on here, is this, is this the one?
Yeah.
No unauthorized motor vehicles. Then it tells you, you can walk, you can take your dog, you can ride a bike, you can get your horse, and you can cross-country ski. This sticker up here tells you what section of the trail you're in. This one happens to be five S, which is five south, and that's down on Orchard Road. The second one to it tells you where you are, both sides. Uh, so that if you fall down, get hurt, you know you went in on Orchard Road, in between Orchard, five S, the other end of it is five N, which is north, the trail runs north and south. I'm doing this for the safety of the people that are using this thing. They're yellow reflective signs down here, you have to have caution yellow. It also tells you that it's the North Brookfield Rail Trail on the sides. So anybody out of town, or even the people in town that have never been down there, this is what you're gonna see down there. No unauthorized motor vehicles. By unauthorized, it means the rail trail committee, the board of selectmen have said, the crew can go down there with their motor vehicles to maintain the trail, long boars, tractors, uh, pickup trucks to, to bring equipment down. Highway is gonna have the combination, there's a combination lock in here to pull a pin out of this hole to release it. They pull these out of the box, set it down on the ground, and you can drive right over these, these things. Everything is below, at exact rate.
So if somebody, if somebody gets hurt down there, and they call...
If they call nine-one-one, police have the combination, highway has a combination, EMS and fire all have the combination.
But the posts are numbered, right?
The posts are numbered on the, uh...
So, so if people are paying attention to, to the post when they go in, they can, when they call, they can...
Yeah, and the sections, other than, there's two long ones, so you can kind of see each end of the section. And if you pay attention at all, like these kids did not do, they went by five of these that says no unauthorized vehicles on their way up here, and they told me, well, we didn't know. Apparently, they couldn't read, because the signs were on there. And they had to go around rocks and stumps and stones where I didn't have the signs. So this is what you're gonna see, they're safety yellow. I, my wife and I walk trails in other parts of, uh, we go up to Hardwick, we go up to Barry, and, uh, Oakham. They have round posts, they have swing gates. This was the cheapest, most economical. I had them made locally by a, a metal fab shop just over in Brookfield. They did a wonderful job on them, just what I wanted. I painted them, I've done all the graphics on it, I think they look pretty good. Matt Grant takes pictures of them, resting his bike on them.
Daily photo on there.
Thank you. Kim and her husband helped me, Brandon's gotta take off. And that was it. Stay off the trail with motorized vehicles, and you won't have a problem.
Are you gonna replace the chain down on Brickyard with those?
The next one says Brickyard Road. It's all coming.
I was just wondering why that, why, why is there a chain there, anyway, I was just curious.
It says people were driving up behind techo block, so I put the cable across, they had to stop them.
Gotcha.
This is taking a while, this is a three-month project I've been working on, these things. Took a while to get them, took me three weeks to paint them, now I'm stenciling and, and we're installing.
I was just curious why Brickyard was the only one that had a chain before, I didn't know what the problem was that I'm...
It's all I could do, you know.
John, how long does it take to install one?
It's about an hour. If I have three guys, myself and two other guys, it's an hour and a half per post.
Per post.
Because we also have to put a telephone pole next to them, so that's, I have a drill, I, uh, somebody let me borrow their postal diggers on front of my tractor, so, and thank you Bob Litten for that, uh, so. Other stuff has been donated, stuff that, this was, came out of the rail trail fund. Uh, but just so you know, you're gonna see these things go up. Whether they're aesthetically pleasing to you, doesn't matter, but they're safe. It's what all the other places have, if you go to them, the big swing gates are about four grand. These were a hundred and fifty bucks a piece.
So is that an option for those people that were here, that want to make the dead-end road? That say if the fire department says, we still want it, it doesn't make sense to block it off to us, to put like those in for them, there, so that it is a dead end, but it still has access for the fire department, both ends?
We don't know.
Just a, just a thought, I was just thinking of that, that, you know, because those...
Yeah, it's possible.
If the fire department says we, you can't block that road, if that's something that they could...
Big swinging gate painted that color, marked on the side, so they could just swing it over.
The swing gates are about four grand for, for the whole installation.
I can run down the floor and get the one that used to be in my driveway, it's really big.
You gotta find out the, the rules first, and then go...
It was just a thought, I was like, that was easy to undo in the lock.
Certainly a good one.
The reason for the combination was so we don't have to chase keys.
Yeah.
And the combination can be changed, any, if you get a stinker or something, you can change it.
The worst-case scenario, in an emergency, bolt cutters, they can just...
Oh, you could, but everybody's gonna, everybody's gonna have the combination, everyone that needs to, will have the combination.
Yeah, it's much better.
And they already do. I already gave these guys, I spoke with Chief Smith, I spoke with Jason at Highway, uh, Joey and Darren over here have it, and, uh, they gave it to Patrick. National Grid has it also, because they have a, uh, right away for where their power lines go down to the other side of Conwhar Road. So you'll see their trucks in there also, it's up to maintain it. Sorry it took so long, but thank you. Stay off the trail with your motor vehicles.
Oh, sure, it was usual, John.
Yeah, no, it was good.
I only lost one, but Brandon went to another meeting.
All right, anything else?
Well, we're covering Fourth of July, right?
Yeah, Fourth of July.
So after, after the parade, it's gonna start at the fire station, like we planned last year, it's gonna go up to Main Street, it's gonna go up Main Street to Grove Street, and back down to the common, where we will, we're trying to have events throughout the day at the common. So it'll be like a family fun day. And maybe we can do your fundraiser thing, idea there. We're gonna try to get a dunk tank, where you'll be able to dunk all of us, who, perhaps, whoever's interested. Maybe, maybe even school committee members, if they're there.
I would represent the school committee there.
Good man.
Yeah, it's awfully, long way down for you, that's why...
The water can only be three feet deep, I'm telling you.
This is on July fifth, you said, right?
On Monday.
Yeah, it's all day, Monday.
Do, is like, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, like all them all know about it, that they're, are they gonna try to...
Not yet, we just started...
Yeah, we did short notice.
Rounding together.
If they want to put together, um, a, a group to march in there, have them call me.
Did you call those guys, or you met them, or are you guys...
Yes, yeah. We're trying to, they have, uh, they brought it up to the academy years ago, um, for the student troop, um, it's a rock wall.